Unless he called in, there's a number that somebody called in on. I don't know if that's his.
I called in.
That's me.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just leaving my office, so I'm attending the meeting long distance here.
Well, thank you.
Tim Masters here?
I think Bill is on, Rick.
Okay.
Doesn't look like Tim's there yet either.
Tim indicated he may not be able to make it. He's coming back from Batavia, I think, so we shouldn't wait for him.
Bill, is Bill Tine on?
No.
Yeah, he's there, but he's muted.
Okay.
You're in.
Okay, good. You're in, Bill? Good.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. We'll get started then. We're gonna start the special meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the village of Williamsville, July 8th, 2020, and I will seem we don't have a flag. We'll say the pledge of the flag, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Tine?
Here.
Mr. Freeze?
Here.
Andrews?
Here.
Ms. Fullwiler?
Here.
Mr. Celeste? Mr. Celeste?
He's muted.
Mr. Greco, village attorney?
Present.
Mr. Master? Not here. Mr. Etoo?
Here.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Celeste. I am here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to accept the minutes from the June 17th meeting. Looking for a motion, anyone?
Yeah.
Moved by Ms. Fullwiler, second by Mr. Tine. All in favor? Aye. The polls carried. Tonight, we have four hearings before us. The first one on the agenda is 51 Evans Street. Is the applicant here?
I am.
Okay. I'm just gonna go over a couple of things and then you can get started, okay? I'm gonna list the items that are on your, in your in your file, and they are ZBA application dated May 29th, 2020, a permit denial letter from the code enforcement officer, legal notice published in the AMRSP on July 1st, a list of and letter to notified neighbors, a letter to the applicant announcing hearing, and then the agenda. We're gonna ask you to give your, to address the five points that you were given, and if you would, the five criteria, if you would address all five of those, and then after you're done with your presentation, we will ask if there's anyone from the audience that would like to speak in favor or against your variance. After that, we'll ask the members of the zoning board if they have, would like to ask any questions. We will then adjourn and we will make a decision right after this hearing. So if you would please state your name and present your case, please.
I have to say, I'm not sure what you mean by the five criteria. Was that the original application?
Yes, that's correct. The application, there was five criteria there that that you addressed.
Okay.
You have a copy of that?
I don't have it with me in front of me. It's actually in the copies in my car, but I think I can, I think I can address them. So my name is St. George. My address is 51 Evans. And we need to build a new garage. Ours is in disrepair. There's some structural issues with the concrete, so we're starting from scratch again. And while we're building and incurring this expense, we wanted, the current garage has a loft. It's not super tall, but we wanted to be able to use that space for our family. I'm a teacher, so I do a lot of remote teaching and I probably will be doing a lot more this coming year. My hu, my husband and daughters are classical musicians, so sometimes they do some lessons and, and we really need some more space. So we were hoping to be able to get a higher variance to go a little bit higher so that we could have something that would be acoustic and also just good enough space. Our goal is to make this look like, I mean, obviously, we can't recreate a historical barn, but to make it look as much like some of the other barn slash garages that are in the neighborhood so that it has a feel, because we certainly don't want something that's gonna be an eyesore.
Anything else now? So do you remember the five criteria that your answers?
Apologies, I do not off the top of my head.
There was about, will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district?
Okay, and I don't believe that it will. There are already quite a few similar structures and some are right about that same height. And again, our whole goal is that we're going to build, we've already spoken to the direct next door neighbors whose property it abuts, and unless there's a really huge surprise, they were fine with it. You know, we've actually shown them plans, so they did not have any objections to the height.
Okay, the next criteria was, is the alleged difficulty or hardship self-created?
No, actually, the, the garage is lower than our neighbor's driveway, so we have a lot of water that comes in, and that ended up really just destroying the, the concrete, so we would raise up a little bit and then obviously deal with some positive drainage into our yard with planting so that we don't subsequently flood the neighbor's yard. So, but we had nothing, you know, that was already here. It's a very old garage.
Okay. Then there's provide evidence to demonstrate that under the ethical zone zoning regulations, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return from the property in question, provided that the, provided that the lack of return is established by competent financial evidence. I guess that, that was the wrong criteria. That's for, that's for a use variance. So that
Strictly for family use. We're not looking to have anyone live out there, put plumbing out there. We just need a little more space. That's
Okay, then there was, then there was a, what is the minimum variance deemed necessary inadequate?
And I don't have the exact number that the, the builder said, but I think we were it's, I'm sorry, it's right on there, and I apologize.
You said mean, you said you're requiring a variance to have a mean roof height of 20 foot to the peak.
And actually
Of actually 24.8, so it's actually
Yeah, I think our latest, because we ended up looking at a pole barn construction after we spoke with Tim Masters so that we don't have to do the footer, but it'll also still have that barn appearance. Probably a lot more like 22 at the very peak.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's what Tim gave us an analysis, and it says in there that it was it was under, it was at 20 foot at the peak and not the average. All right, is there anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
I will say that there the, all the adjoining properties going down Evans all have barn structures and several of them at the peak are over, over the 20 feet, so I feel like it's not going to be abnormal. You know, in this little section that we're in, there are a couple of them on Eagle also that are at or possibly a little bit higher.
Okay. Okay, this time, if you would mute for a second.
Of course.
I'm gonna ask if anyone else that's on would like to speak in favor or against this variance. Okay, not hearing any. We will now have the board members ask any questions, so you can unmute yourself now, and we'll start with Mr. Freeze.
Hey, Rick.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, before Joe goes, and I had to step away for a second, so maybe you already and I heard you mention the issue about the peak versus the average, so is that, I mean, the way I look at the code, the, for this type of roof, the height is defined by the average, not the peak of this type of roof.
Correct.
So I don't think she needs quite as much of a variances as indicated in the paperwork.
Correct.
Is that, okay, all right.
Yeah, the peak, the peak was 20, she's saying it's like 22 feet. Tim was saying it's about 20 feet, but that's not what the average is, so.
Do we know what the average?
I don't believe so. Tim didn't give us information. He gave us a little analysis, but he said understand that the 20 foot is to the ridge and not the average roof height. So variance wouldn't, wouldn't be the full full 20 or six foot that she's looking for.
Right.
It'd be a little less than that, would be less than that.
I mean, I suppose, and obviously, I don't wanna prejudge anything you're new, but I suppose if the board were to grant it, I, I guess if, as long as we do it, as long as you grant the variance to whatever height you, to the peak, that is fine, but just so we're clear that, that the variance is only required above, you know, measuring it to the average.
Right.
We don't know what that figure is, but I don't think we necessarily need to nail that down for purpose, because what's gonna, you know, it'll either be get approved or won't.
Okay, I think the last couple, I remember, we did mention that the peak wouldn't be any higher than 20 foot. The last couple that were at 20 foot.
Right, and if you wanted to impose that as a condition, that would be fine, you know, notwithstanding the definition, that certainly would be a reasonable condition.
Okay.
To say, you know, at highest point would not exceed X or whatever. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Mr. Freeze?
Yes, I'd like to ask the applicant, if I may, is this what you submitted, the only thing that you submitted in regards to construction drawings for this project?
That was because we didn't have a builder. We were getting different estimates, so that is my feeble attempt at giving you some idea of how we would design it so that it would look like it would fit in.
The sad part about it is there is no dimensions on this drawing, and it's very difficult for us to make a determination as to exactly what we're approving.
Right, I understand.
There's no information on this at all, other than it's a structure with a peak roof and two windows and, I guess, garage doors. I'm not even really sure what, what these are.
Those would be garage doors, the carriage house style, so that it, the appearance was a nice, I know that the, I had put the dimensions in in another part of the application. I, I'm new at this and I apologize for any
I apologize too, because unfortunately, this is very important to you, but we just can't, at least I can't truthfully approve or deny something that I have no idea what we're doing. I believe no
Here for.
Not to interrupt, Mr. Freeze, but I think, I believe that the, the structure of the building, that the footprint of the building is going to remain the same. I think what's actually in question is the height. That they wanna go from the 14 that's required, average overall height to 20, 22 at the peak, which would make it less than 20, 20 foot.
Sorry, according to the drawing, it's, the dimensions did change. It was like 22 by 27.
Okay, then I stand corrected then.
It won't be the same.
Okay, I stand corrected then.
Okay, all righty. I drove the area and I saw where there was numerous garages slash barns, whatever you'd like to call outbuildings in the area that I don't think that this would, would be too much of an issue. I just wish that we had more extensive drawing to look at so that we can make an intelligent decision, but that's, that's all I have.
And I can say that we certainly would run any formal plans before we built anything, and we're really looking for the variance. Show it to Tim and make sure that he was comfortable before we went ahead with construction, just so that you have someone who has better skills than I do. Just making sure that it's still within what was agreed upon.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, again, and Rick, I apologize if this was already gone over while I stepped away, but I am a little bit confused now, because in where, in the application, it says requesting a variance to have a mean roof height of 20 feet with a peak height of 24 feet eight inches, but then the Ivy Lee these are the same applications. It's an Ivy Lee application, the same address says 20.8 feet, and I don't know if that's referring to the peak or the average. So the, the difficulty is trying to know exactly what relief is being requested and what you're gonna, what, if you grant any, that you're gonna grant.
That's correct.
That makes it a little bit difficult for you, as Joe pointed out.
Yes. Tim isn't on yet, is he? He said he might climb on. Apparently not. I thought I saw on a phone call here somewhere.
Can we table this until we get some drawings? So we know what the dimensions are?
Well, obviously, we, we don't have any information. We don't know exactly what it is.
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so it's gonna be difficult to give any kind of a if we could, Chip, could we, could we adjourn this for the, for a time being until the end of the meeting and maybe Tim would be on at that point?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You can do that, and if necessary, it could be adjourned to a later meeting too. And, but on the other hand, again, I, it definitely makes it difficult. I don't know that it's an insurmountable problem. If you guys know how much, how high you would want this to be, either stated as an average or a peak, I think you could still grant the relief, and they, that's what they'd be bound by. And of course, obviously, you don't need to grant any relief if you don't think it's appropriate, but, but at any rate, I, I think it makes sense, so let's see if Tim or maybe bring, shed any more light on this if we sort of adjourn it at the end of the meeting.
I think it's important that we have a little bit more detail in the drawings. I agree with Joe. I think it's, you know, I understand challenges of trying to do this as a homeowner and to control budgets and not to spend too much money, but, you know, turning out drawings from the Forest Elementary School of Architecture is a problem for us. So, and I, I say that to be humorous, not to be, you know, insulting, because I appreciate where you're coming from. But I, I think the things you need to pay attention to are that we have a specific code that we have to grant a variance from. I, I understand what Chip is saying, and, and I appreciate where Rick is coming from, especially when the construction season is short in Western New York, and time is, is really important to get these things approved. So we would love to accommodate you, but we have an obligation to protect the other residents in the village. And it's not just simply building a structure with a different height and not knowing how those, the structure height will be really laid out to determine that specifically, that mean height against the code, particularly when you're talking about changing the elevation that the building is to be built at, because you can, it's very clear looking at the site, how the garage is lower than the adjoining driveway, which is immediately next door, and that it's going to be coming up, which compounds the issue of height. So I think, you know, in general, I like the idea of carriage houses and I like the architectural look. I think it is the way it's laid out in your yard. It's almost like another house fronting on the street as opposed to an accessory garage, the way it's located and the way it's situate with the driveway. But it is, we still have a code and we have an obligation to look at that, and I'm, I'm concerned without knowing what the numbers are to just simply grant it on principle. So it's, it's a little bit troubling.
Okay, so let, let's see if anyone wants to entertain a motion to adjourn this to the August meeting. We are having an August meeting, so that is August.
How does that work with this lady's schedule? Is that a severe problem for you to be?
I feel like it is, and I, you know, I certainly, I completely understand your concerns. Part of why I'm here in the village is that I love that it's a small village and we work things through. I did speak with Tim once we knew that we weren't going with the Ivy Lee plan, and he suggested the pole barn. And I asked if we needed to change things, and he didn't think I needed to give you additional at that point, you know, additional drawings or info, or I would have tried to get those. So, I mean, we certainly can, can get something done on a computer. It's very tight because of the whole shutdown with everything as far as getting concrete poured, and even though we would be doing the pole barn, we would be doing a pad, just not the full footer, because hence the pole barn construction. But I think if we don't know until August, we're probably not going to be able to do this until the following year.
Well, it depends on your contractor's schedule. It's certainly doable, you know, in August. There's no question it can be done, but it depends on
availability of your contractor and
Right.
And I, you know, it, it's so vague and sketchy what this is going to look like with the drawings that we have in front of us. All of these things are important in terms of the willingness to grant the variance. What's the aesthetic appeal of it as well as the technical limits, because something really attractive is gonna incentivize people to say, yeah, this is, this is an embellishment. This makes the village better.
Having the same, having the same situation as what you're trying to achieve here at my own property. We don't wanna give a hypothetical figure on a height either and find out that it's not high enough for you for you to be able to do what you need to do. I mean, is it 20 feet? Is it 22 feet? Is it 24 feet? We can't, we can't hypothetically do this. But I, Rick, if we may, I, I'd like to see if Tim shows up before we make a motion to adjourn this till August.
Thank you. I just, I was just looking over the analysis that he wrote up in the email, and he says that they would like to construct a new 27 by 22 foot garage at 20 foot height in the same location. They will be over the 14 foot max height by six foot in this case. It is my understanding that the 20 foot is to the ridge and not the average roof height. I know this often comes up regarding the definition of building height, but my discussion with the applicant, I believe 20 foot would be the total height of the building.
That's going to be too low for you to put a second story in there.
It is.
I know because I have one, and, and I had to get a variance for it. Ivy Lee Construction will not work off of these plans, of course, as you know. They must have something that they're going to supply you for the $30,000, $40,000 that you're going to be spending on this structure. I'm concerned if we grant you a 20 foot height, which is the overall height, you're not gonna have enough headroom to do what you wanna do on the second floor.
I agree with you, and when we spoke with the pole barn construction, you know, he just wrote us something that's on a slip of paper right now. And I believe, I can see if I can pull it up, and if you wanna table this and I can look for it so that I'm not holding anyone else up, I could pull up what he wrote, but I believe it was 22 feet at the peak.
So why don't we at this point hold off and wait and see if Tim does come on. If he does, we can discuss it further with him. We'll move on to our next hearing if that's okay with you. We'll adjourn this hearing temporarily and then get back to you, okay?
I'll mute, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to the next hearing, which is 46 North Long. I'll read the, is the applicant here for 46 North Long?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So I'll read what's the, the items that are in the file. There's a ZBA application dated June 2nd, 2020. There's a permit denial letter from the code enforcement officer. There's the legal notice published in the AMRSP on July 1st, 2020. There's a list and letter to the notified neighbors, and there's a letter to the applicant announcing the hearing, and there is a copy of the agenda. We're gonna let you give your presentation, and then we're gonna ask if anyone would like to speak in favor or against. And then we will, we'd like you to address the five criteria. Do you have a copy of those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Address those five criteria, and then we will ask if anyone from the board would like to ask any questions. Please state your name and address and go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you, sir. My name is Tina Amies. I'm the property owner at 46 North Long Street in Williamsville, 14221. Thank you for hearing this variance application. I'll just state the basic application at the moment, which is illustrated in the site plan that was supplied in the application. We are asking to rebuild our garage, actually for some similar reasons that the previous applicant has noted, and I'll bring that up later, to rebuild our garage on our property. However, moving it slightly closer to the lot line and placing the foundation, which will be a poured foundation two feet from the lot line. Now, understand as an accessory structure that would be allowable, except for that we don't have a parapet roof. We will have a historically accurate overhang, which then would necessarily extend into that required two foot setback. So that, that is illustrated on the site plan, and the site plan also does show the existing garage structure footprint in a dotted line. Front to back, the new structure will occupy the same depth. The new structure, however, would be slightly wider into the main part of the property to accommodate a storage area. So I'd also like to refer to the elevation supplied by my architect, Patricia Bailey, a licensed architect in East Aurora. The reason we're placing it closer to the property line is that at the moment, the garage doors are very small, they're dangerous. With today's vehicles, you know, you knock the thing, you lose a mirror, it's, it's quite rough. And we also don't want to end up swerving behind the house where we can catch pedestrians and other structures and, you know, sort of have a dangerous situation. So the plan has been drawn up, as you can see from this elevation, so that the garage doors line up exactly with the side of the house, and you're gonna have a direct shot into the garage. That would require a two foot setback on the foundation, leaving me, you know, needing to request a variance for the width of the overhang that would extend into that setback. Obviously, we could adjust that overhang to accommodate whatever kind of you know, variance might be deemed sort of reasonable in this point. So as to as to the desirable change in the character of the neighborhood and detriment to nearby properties, I would say no, that replacement would improve our property. It'll add to the character of a neighborhood, because we're replacing a failing and adequate structure. Again, the structure's low. It's already been extended forward at one point to accommodate a reasonable sized car. That extension is leaning, it's becoming dangerous, the floor is failing. You know, water is draining in the wrong direction. All the above means we've got to right the structure, build it correctly, get the drainage right and, and get it, you know, where you can safely get in and out with a sort of a normal car. I have a small SUV. I'm not talking about a juggernaut or anything. Just, you know, normal cars that we use today. So we want to maintain the historic character of the neighborhood. We want to match the historic character and charm of the house. And therefore, we are incorporating a new hit roof, which will be shallower slope. It's a five in 12, which the current roof is actually a lot higher than that. I can't give you what the current is, but the architect has designed this with a, you know, a less obtrusive but still accurate historically hit roof. And, and we would like to put on overhangs that match the current home. Now, the, the existing house has an 18 inch overhang, but we would dial that down to about 12 inches to minimize the size of the variance that we'd be requesting. So can the benefits be sought by us by some other means in this variance? Not really, because we can't really put a garage like this anywhere else on the structure. The floor is failing. We want to have a safe housing ingress and egress for the cars. And we, we don't want to sort of be dangerously swerving behind the house. And, you know, if the doors are in line with the driveway, that's fine, but if they're not, we're gonna be sort of causing problems like that. And, you know, if the doors are in line with the driveway, that's fine, but if they're not, we're going to be sort of causing problems like that. Um, it's asked, is this requested variance substantial? I would argue it's not. Uh, we don't propose to put this foundation into the required setback. Absolutely, that would remain at the two foot. So the only variance I'm asking for is the amount of the overhang that would go into the required setback. In addition, the garage is not going to be located within 10 feet of any other structure, either on our property or on the neighbor's property. Uh, so, you know, from a building code, fire code standpoint, we're not, you know, we're not sort of getting into any issues there. Um, again, as, as opposed, I'm on number three, whether the variance is substantial. The overhang will be made as small as possible. I mean, the lowest recommended by the architect is 12 inches. How I could discuss with the framer and the, and the contractor to see if we could take that down if, if needed. Uh, but we do obviously have to have some kind of overhang to, you know, not impact the, the footing of the structure where we've got. You know, if we don't drain the water away properly, we're going to, we're going to just create another failing structure. Um, I don't believe the variance will have any effect on the physical or environmental conditions. We're not creating any new use, we're not creating noise, we're not creating. Uh, we're actually, we're actually improving a drainage situation and we're improving um, a sort of safety ingress, egress situation. I have discussed it with my neighbors also. Um, I'm still going to allow them to garden on their side of my garage. I won't be fencing that and taking that area away. Um, went over the whole application with them so that they did fully understand. And I believe they also did speak with Tim Masters as well for any additional information that they, that they needed. Uh, you know, to understand this application. Um, is the less difficulty hardship self-created? I would argue not, because these lots are extremely narrow, as you'd appreciate. I mean, our main house is already a non-conforming structure. I mean, um, in fact, I think even our existing garage may be non-conforming too, because. The not, the lot is very, very narrow there. In fact, our lot, if I look back at my deeds, um, was carved out of the lots of the two side houses on each side of me. So each, the house on each side of me is old, older than our house. We're at 1923, but they're older than that. And then at some point, our lot was carved out of those two lots, so we have a narrow lot. I'd also like to point out that my neighbor um, has a very similar um, situation. I haven't measured exactly because it's intrusive, but um. I believe her overhang is hanging over probably four or five inches into the required two, two foot setback there. Again, it's a non-conforming structure. I'm not saying it's, you know, anything wrong with it. I'm saying that that's sort of what's, we've got there is that even if we set our footings, you know, within code. Um, you know, your overhang is, is something else you've got to put on there that, you know, may not be accounted for. So um, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the drawings. Um, I did actually file uh, the, the full building and construction plans with Tim. Uh, my contractor's been in, Tim is aware of everything. Um, he was happy for me to file the plans drawn as they are pending this variance meeting. And um, as discussed with him, uh, depending whether this is approved or not, we would provide a new site plan. With the garage moved, you know, back to wherever it may have to be moved before he could have approved the building permit. So we're really just waiting on um, the result of this variance um, zoning board uh, determination. To have Tim uh, fully review the, 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 the full permit plans and, and building construction documents. Um, and he's reviewing those already. Uh, and I've kept him apprised of everything as he's gone along, so and, and my architect's observant of the code. So we don't anticipate any other um, issues with the proposed construction, which does also include an addition on the back of the house. As a mudroom, which is in the hatch, in the site plan.
Very good. Um, is there anything else that you want to present before the board before we ask questions?
Um, I don't think so. I have the drawings. There are also some photographs in there of the um, existing. Property, so you can see the character of it and my, my survey is there also.
Okay. All right. Uh, this time I'm going to ask if there's, if you could mute yourself, please, for a second? And then I'll ask if there's anybody that it's in attendance that would like to speak in favor or against this variance. And seeing none, uh, we will have the, the, the members of the zoning board ask any questions to the applicant. You can unmute yourself and then we'll start again with Mr. Freeze.
Thank you, Rick. Ms. Ames, I'm looking at the drawing and the, and the drawing is, is very well done and I want to thank you for that. Um, there's two things that I, I'm curious about. Uh, did you consider a, a 16 foot wide garage door rather than two, what looks to be custom nine by seven doors? Uh, normally they're eight by seven and I was wondering if that was something that crossed your mind? Uh, and that, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, sorry, thanks, sorry, sir. Thank you. Um, yeah, the existing garage has eight by seven doors, as you mentioned. Uh, they're very, very tight. I'm sure you appreciate. Um, so um, you know, we certainly have got to get either wider doors or get rid of that central post. I mean, it, they're just, you know, these days it is just not good. So uh, my architect favors the two separate doors over one 16 foot. Obviously, I do think the two 16 doors are much more historically correct when you look at it, you know, than a big 16 foot wide door. Which really fits more on a ranch or a mid-century modern structure. Um, I, I don't think a 16 foot wide is as appealing historically as this. So that's why um, we've opted over to the nine foot doors. I didn't know if they were custom. If they are, they are. I'll probably have to end up paying for that, but um. That is sort of what my contractor recommended, not to go eight foot doors, because otherwise we're not really improving this structure in any way.
Right. The only reason why I brought that up, because you're concerned and I'm not sure. I looked at the house today. I'm not sure what the concern really is in regards to swinging behind the house to make up that one foot. On the, be the north side of the garage. But if you were to use a 16 foot garage door, which nowadays they make these things to look like, you know, barn doors and, and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then at that point, you could shift the garage over north one foot. And not cop, and not have that one foot overhang into the side yard. And you wouldn't have to swerve behind the house in order to, to navigate the garage. That was my thought.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm also concerned about the so-called swerving behind the house because we're talking one foot. Uh, if my calculations are correct, which I know they're not because they're not in scale. But it looks like that you have approximately four feet of a wall where that window is. Um, which by code you have to have a sheer wall and I'm sure that's what the dimension of that is. That wouldn't be changed. The only thing that you would, you would make up with a 16 foot door is you would get rid of the center support. But the good part about it, it would still start one foot off the south side. You wouldn't have to shift or, or try to navigate behind the house to get into the garage. Um, that's an option that I think you may want to look at to, then you won't need this variance at all.
Yeah. Uh, so where, what, one thing that isn't shown on this site plan, it's on, obviously on the construction documents is. Um, this new proposed addition. Uh, there's going to be a man door on the side of the garage, so you're going to, basically, the area behind that new building right now. The new addition is all concrete walkway to the garage, so we cannot drive on that. And we don't want to in case someone's commuting from the addition to the garage and, you know, or even the dog or something, you know what I mean? So I, I take what you're saying about the 16 foot. The post size in, but right now it's not shown on this drawing, but it's one foot between the two doors. So the total width is nine, nines, 18, 19. So you're saying uh, move it all over, remove that one foot and then just narrow the whole doorway structure.
You don't even have to narrow the door. I mean, you could use an 18 foot door uh, rather than a 16 foot door, you know.
Oh, my contractor's, and I, has told me, and I think the architect too, that 18 foot door, 16 foot doors are maximum that you can buy.
That they're, that very well may be.
Yeah, that's why. It's because we cannot, 16 foot is the maximum of a single garage door. I think that's even true for custom. They probably just get to be too big and even the opener may not lift it. I don't know. But um, so that's why.
Shift that over a foot into that 24 foot area would not be something that you would be willing to do.
If we have to, we have to, obviously. Um, so then we would go to a three foot, you know, foundational setback. And I, I most likely will have to manage, I most likely will. Stick with two nine foot doors and just somehow manage with the driving on the pad or do something. I mean, I'm very, we could do a 16 foot door if we have to. I, I really don't think they look good in the neighborhood, but again, it's a practical solution that could be employed. Um, you know, I certainly appreciate your, uh, your thought there, yes.
And it's just an option that I wanted to bring up. That's.
Yeah, thank you very much, sir. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeze. Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Uh, Mr. Celeste?
Uh, yes, and, and uh, just listening to Mr. Freeze and uh, he really addressed the questions that I had. So I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fullwaller?
No, I, I don't have any other questions at this time either.
Mr. Tyne?
Can the garage go a little further back?
Uh, no, uh, well, we may grab, but if you could come to my property. There's an enormous drop-off right behind the garage, down to the drainage creek, the long ditch creek there. It's, it's something like a 15 foot drop-off. It, it's bad. What we're doing actually, um, again, is proposing to already build a huge retaining wall. And my contractor's already going to have to dig down some ridiculous amount. For the foundation of the garage to make sure the whole thing doesn't go into the creek. It's a huge hill drop-off there. We might be able to push it back maybe six inches, something like that. The new structure is already set back from the existing by, uh, I would say about a foot. Um, so anymore and we'll be in the creek. We might be able to push it back a little bit as we are proposing now a retaining wall.
Well, the purpose of pushing it back would be to give you a little, just a little bit more maneuvering room as you're trying to. Make the swing as you go behind the house. Um, because I, I, I'm, I, I am curious, because you've made such a focus of maintaining the. Historic context of the structure with the adjoining structures and all the rest. Why is it you're switching from the gable that you have, which matches the house? And then going to a hip roof, which does not match the house?
Oh, no, my house is hip. My house is hip.
Am I looking at the wrong property then on this?
Yeah, my house is hip and my porch roof is hip, my entry porchico is hip, my existing garage is hip. Believe me, I wanted a gable roof, but my architect wouldn't do it because she said it'll be just too high and the, and the hip roof is going to recede a lot better. Uh, I mean, you know, yeah, sorry, sir. I didn't want to.
No, no, that's fine. I, I, I think I'm looking at your neighbor's house is.
Submit it, pictures.
Oh, yes, my neighbor to the left is gable. Yes, yes, yes.
So I, I got you. I see it.
I apologize, yes.
No, no, I apologize. You're, you're perfectly right to do what you're doing. That makes sense.
No, actually, my architect, I told her at the start, I want a gable roof. And she's like, we are going to keep this matching, everything else.
Yeah.
We're going to do a hip roof. So, and my co, they overruled me, so I said, okay.
No, then everything else um, makes sense to me and I think the other, other uh, other board members asked the questions that uh, answer and address my issues. I'm good.
Yeah, sorry. I can see now that the um, I can see now that it's not really clear if the roofs are hip or gable or what there. Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so at this time, um, is there anything else that you'd like to present before the board before we. Um, determine what we're going to, the outcome of this case? You, you, we just lost you. We lost your vo, your voice.
Sorry, no, I wanted to thank you for your suggestions. I mean, we had sort of been down those angles already and, you know. Obviously, we'll be as creative as we can, dependent on your best advice and, and guidance that you provide us.
Okay, well, appreciate it. Thank you. So if you want to mute yourself, um, we're going to close the hearing. And um, unless we have some, something to ask for you, you won't, there won't be any more input by yourself. Uh, unless we have some questions, but um, at this point, we're going to make a decision on this, okay? Thank you. Okay. All right, let's uh, adjourn the meeting or the hearing.
Rick?
Yes.
Rick, sorry, I just wanted to make sure, did, did we already, did you call for anybody else to comment on this?
Yes, yes, I did that before the, before the members um, asked questions. Yes, I did. Okay, so at this point, um, I'll ask for a, a motion to. I'll ask for a motion to accept, to approve the variance as requested and then we can get into the discussion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, or excuse me, that we accept. The uh, the situation as, as, as written and as.
Submit it. Okay. Thank you. Well, motion by Mr. Freeze, second by.
Second.
By Mr. Tyne. Did you get that, Debbie?
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. All right, on to question. Or anything anyone would like to bring up about it? All right, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Tyne?
Yes.
Mr. Freeze?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Fullwaller?
Yes.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion passes five to zero. Um, if the applicant's still there, if you, did you hear what our decision was?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much for listening to everything and providing so much, you know, so constructive, you know, suggestions. Yes.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you for attending tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, then we're going to move on to our next public hearing. It is 151 Garrison Road is the applicant in attendance.
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. I'm going to read what's in the file. There is a ZBA application dated June 1st, 2020. A permit denial letter from the code enforcement officer. A legal notice published in the MSB on July 1st, 2020. A list and letter to notified neighbors, letter to the applicant announcing the hearing and the agenda. Uh, we're going to let you speak and give your presentation and then afterward, we're going to ask if any representatives, anybody from the audience would like to speak in favor or against. We then will have the, the, the members of the board ask any questions if they wish to. Uh, please state your name and address and please address the, you're familiar with the five points?
Yeah, the five points that are in the application, correct?
Right. Okay, yeah. So address those five points and you can please get started.
Sure. Jessica Perry?
Jessica Perry.
151 Garrison Road, Williamsville, New York, 14221. And I appreciate everyone's time this evening and putting us on the agenda for our variance application. Um, just to, to start, what we are proposing and what we are needing approvals on. Is our current property has two existing driveways. Separate from each other and looking at the house, one's to the left, one's to the right. We are looking to add a horseshoe connecting driveway, connecting the two. And out of variance is that it will take up more than 20% of the green space on the front of the property. So I will go ahead and pull up the five um, questions. So there was a survey that was submitted um, of our property in addition to the drawing, the architectural drawing from our contractor as well. The driveway would be a 10 feet by 28 feet, again, connecting the left and the right side of the home to provide a unified front to the house. Um, following reasons. So our number one main concern is, and the reason that we ask to do this is for the safety of not only our family. We have a nine-year-old and we actually have a one-year-old and one on the way. So we do have um, young children and Garrison is full of growing families with lots of kids. And it is full of life as far as pedestrians, um, being a main way down to Main Street and shopping, um, and things like that. So the safety concern is our number one. Um, it's significantly easier to pull out into traffic rather than to back into traffic. We would use it as our number one concern is a turnaround driveway, um, to avoid any mishaps or accidents, if you will. Um, in addition to that, I know we have a 30 mile an hour sign that's posted right outside our home. I would love the village to put a radar in front of our home to capture the speeds. Um, they're actually a little bit scary, um, how fast people travel up and down Garrison. Um, we see it more. Um, we see it multiple times a day. In addition to that, Garrison is also a street where there are no do not park signs and the shoulders of Garrison are always in use when people are having parties or families or get togethers. Um, and there have been a couple of instances. Um, it was actually on June, I have, I had taken a couple of photos as well in case the board had wanted to see. It was on Thursday, June eleventh, our neighbor two doors down was hosting a gathering, um, post funeral services for a family member, and there was about, I would say twenty to twenty-five cars that lined Garrison. And we were unable to back out where I had to actually physically get into Garrison Road and stop traffic in order to allow my husband to back out for us to leave our home and property because both sight lines, left and right, were blinded to, to both of us, and we couldn't see around the vehicles that were parked there. Um, so back to questions. Um, so again, we had, we had touched upon the safety of our family, our, our neighborhood pedestrians. Um, it will allow us as the homeowners to safely pull out into Garrison rather than backing into traffic, increasing safety and reducing blind spots or limited visibility that we may face as drivers. Um, the property, again, already has two existing separate driveways, so this would allow for a connection and a uniformity to the front of the property. Will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting this? No, I don't believe so. Um, property two forty-seven Garrison Road, which is owned by the Albertsons, who are close friends of ours, Dave Sutton, a well-known village architect, I'm sure all of you know. He had actually purchased, rehomed, flipped and sold that home and included the same driveway. And they actually would probably have less, they have less green space on that property at two forty-seven than we would. Um, so it's really to enhance the property, um, as it continues to be a positive conversation in the neighborhood. There are many turnaround driveways, again, focusing on the safety, um, and the betterment of the neighborhood and pedestrians and other drivers. Um, the variance, again, so the driveway would be a twenty-eight by ten, um, which is less than max code, but again, um, taking up more than twenty percent of the green space. Additionally, the work would be completed within three days with a crew of less than five men. So it really isn't going to cause too much of a problem or a concern. We have spoken to all of our neighbors, both on the sides of us and across the street, and they're all actually feeling the same situation. Um, our neighbors directly next to us had brought up yesterday. There were a couple of times I've actually had to get out and stop traffic in order to kind of see around, around the vehicles as well. Um, from an environmental or physical change, the only change to the neighborhood is that we would have less grass to cut, I guess, in the front of our home is really the only thing that I'm seeing that's gonna have an impact. Um, we have plans, our neighbors saw the blueprints. Um, you know, we talked about runoffs and a slope and, you know, the, on one fifty-one, we sit up a little higher on a hill. Everything would be, you know, would be angled appropriately from water runoff perspective. Um, and let's see, are there? Again, you have the contracts and the survey, um, for our home and asking for, again, just approval because it's outside of the twenty percent green space. Do you have anything? Nope. Okay.
All right. Okay, um, does there anything else you'd like to add before we turn it over to?
No, again, just our number one reason, um, is purely safety for, again, ourselves, our families and our, all pedestrians and the community and the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You mute yourself for a second until I call you back. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll ask if anyone in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this variance.
Hey, Rick, it's Matt.
Yes, sir.
Um, so the applicant listed a whole pile of what sounded to me like traffic and safety issues that seeing as the village is going to be taking ownership of Garrison, um, at some point, if we haven't already, we might be able to address a good number of those issues with, you know, parking signage and, and speed control devices and things like that, potentially necess, making this variance unnecessary.
Good. So that's, uh, this is, uh, trustee E two speaking about this, just for the applicant's information.
Now, I mean, I don't know about the timing of all of that. It sounds like, I mean, as far as the, the radar control devices are concerned, those are pretty much an act of Congress to get those installed, uh, at least on DOT roads, so this would be our own. But, uh, we can certainly, um, get the county Amherst Police, put their, uh, their temporary radar device in place and, and have a little more attention and focus on, uh, uh, an enforcement along Garrison. I understand completely. I live literally around the corner from this house, so, um, I go by this all the time.
Okay.
I am, through the property though, and we'll say, you know, I understand the, the geometric issues and, um, the two curb cuts on the property, so it's not like it would be a huge change to the neighborhood to do this. Um, but it is, you know, it's, it's, when I was on ZBA two, you know, I know we kind of struggled with, you're basically and they don't have a lot of yard to start with, but um, I guess, I guess that would be a handful of comments from me. Um, I don't know if it's necessary to, you know, but how you guys want to handle it, you know, bills on traffic and safety. It might be worthwhile to kick it up to that committee first or however you want to handle it.
Sounds good. Thank you for your information.
Yep.
Okay, um, at this time, I will ask if, if there's anyone else that'd like to speak in favor or opposition to the variance from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I will ask any of the board members would like to ask the applicant, and the applicant can unmute themselves. Uh, Mr. Tine, you want to start?
Yeah, sure. It's a little unclear to me from your sketch as to where you intend to place this connecting portion of your driveway. Um, it looks like it's out the way you've drawn it, fairly close to the right of way for Garrison Road, potentially even in front of the stone retaining wall for your northerly driveway, so that you're not impacting that stone wall. Is that the case?
There's, no, there's enough, there's enough leeway from the end of the stone retaining wall to the beginning of the driveway or the beginning of the sidewalk in order to begin the curve on the right side, and then it would just connect to the curve on the left side. Um, we would cut into the top. We have our driveway and then we have two steps up to our main front porch. So it would, again, it would, it would be the space from the retaining walls, the sidewalk, it would loop up. It would be ten foot in width. It would be twenty-five, eight, twenty, twenty-eight feet across. And then again, it would connect to the left side existing driveway.
So, so you intend to keep it fairly close to the street where you're putting it, not close to the house, closer to the street?
Well, yeah, yeah, correct. Oh, yes, correct. Not closer to the house, closer, yeah, so there, there'll be sidewalk. There'll be a green space, there'll be the driveway, and then.
I get it. I get, I'm, I'm with you. I get it, which is where my concern is, is that typically when you do this type of configuration, um, you know, and architecturally, it's designed to circle through and do two things. One, be up close to the house, so when you get out of the car, you've, you've entered the property and you're getting out of the car and going right into the front door. The, the other element is it provides maneuvering room and what, you know, you would call in, in traffic engineering stacking. So that you're, you are, you are putting an area where you pull in to the driveway and your car gets away from the street before it begins to make a turn and has to, has to come back. So when you put it really close to the street and you're trying to complete that loop, your car is still turning as you're trying to get it perpendicular to Garrison Road, if you're really close to the street. If the driveway connection portion is up close to the house, by the time you make that turn, you're driving out to the street. You're pulling up to the street forward with your car completely engaged perpendicular to the street and your ability to see left and right, not only across the street, but across the sidewalk, so that you're, you're not placing pedestrians in danger, little kids on tricycles walking up, going up and down the street on the sidewalk. So putting this really close to the street has an aesthetic appearance that's atypical for this type of configuration and, and would look a little awkward, in my opinion. And two, functionally, it, it's problematic for the objectives you're trying to do. It does certainly save you impacting that stone wall and the great issues that go along with trying to blend into the two driveways and the moving of dirt and makes it cheaper. But I, I'm not, um, fond of where you want to put it from this sketch, which is, again, like an earlier applicant this evening, is not particularly detailed in configuration so that we can see how it's really to be laid out. It's just a hand sketch and it makes it very difficult for us to really evaluate the physical location of it. But I, I for one certainly would prefer if this is to be granted, and I have no real problem with this type of configuration, particularly on your lot because you already have two driveways. I'm not anxious to see a proliferation of driveways which have the potential to become parking lots up and down Garrison Road. But the occasional one, and you already have two driveways, to connect them, I don't have a big problem with, but I do not, um, like the idea that it's, that connection is really close to the street, too close to the street, in my opinion. That's all I have, Rick.
Okay, I appreciate that. We have the space and the ability to move it higher. Um, that was the initial, and again, looking at two forty-seven Garrison at the Albertsons home, we have the front yard depth to go up higher. I mean, the stone retaining wall isn't, isn't really my favorite aesthetically. And that's, that's a, that's a down the road project to kind of, you know, remove and shift what that loose stone, um, actually is, but that's another project. But we have the space and the ability to go up higher into the lot if the depth from the sidewalk to the edge, to the close edge of the, of the driveway is concerned. We, we absolutely have depth to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask, Ms. Fullwaller, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, I, I do, because I know that, I'm very familiar with your property because I walk around the area a lot. The, um, there's a, there's a concrete, I would call it more of a pad rather than a driveway because it's not really very deep there. I noticed once in a great while you guys pull in and park there. But, um, um, it's really just a, a, a pad. It's not really long enough. So I'm assuming that if you went further back in your property, you would have to extend to really make it into a driveway so that you could make a turnaround there. Um, the, the question I have, though, is that you, did you consider putting something that you could back into like behind the house or something rather than, um, the front yard? Rather than making this turnaround, what other alternatives did you guys think of?
I would take, if we put it behind to a turnaround, um, that's our right-hand side where the pavement is that goes up, it goes up to a fence. We would tie in, oh, if we had enough space to build a concrete pad in the backyard, that would eat up a lot of our backyard. Um, that, and at some point, we would like to build a garage down the road. Um, that would affect that, um, so.
In addition to that, we're built up and we have a walkout basement. So there's also concern in the back of the property that if we built back behind the gate to do a turnaround to come out, how we would have a limited range because, again, we have a walkout basement and it's a, it's a steep slope from the yard down the stairs behind, in the back of the house.
Okay, okay. I think when we were considering that, um, the Sutton property, we also had a discussion about that that was not to be a parking area, if I recall, when that was approved.
That's a code regulation. It can't be a parking area. It's not supposed to be a parking area.
Yeah, because.
Park in your front yard.
Yeah, and occasionally we, I drive by there and I see them sitting, you know, sitting there. But, so that could be, we don't even have to make that a condition on this one because of the code that doesn't allow anybody to park. So in this situation, if we were to approve it, it could not be used for a parking area, correct?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be, yeah, again, it would just be to help us maneuver, pulling in and pulling out.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Fullwaller?
No, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Celeste?
Uh, yeah, just, um, again, like, looking at the, uh, the plotting of it, it, it's difficult to see exactly how far that is off of the, the sidewalk. So, you know, I, I have to agree with what Bill is saying. You know, I am familiar with the property as well and, and I can, and the street, so I, I understand um, how it is to navigate. And, um, I would just like, I don't have a problem with the, uh, with turnaround there. I, I just think that it should be closer to the house.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Celeste?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to add at this point that I kind of agree with, uh, with Mr. Tine also, um, and I'm looking at a, a Google picture of the property, and it looks like if you could go up to the end of your concrete driveway, bring your, bring your circle into that or your, you know, your, um, drive, your proposed driveway into the top of that, that would give you some relief.
Yeah, and knock out that, knock out that first set of steps, like there's, yeah, yep.
Yep, come in that way, and then that would give you enough room to straighten out your car and go out, drive right out without, you know. I mean, that to me would be a good, a good alternative. Also, you have the two curb cuts. If you didn't have the two curb cuts, it is a narrow lot and it would be difficult to approve this variance, but based on the two curb cuts, um, I would be leaned toward being in favor of it. Um, we have one more member, Mr. Freeze. Would you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just want to agree with, uh, Mr. Tine and Ms. Fullwaller in regards to this. I, I, I'm, I'm finding it hard to believe that your lot is the same depth front yard than Sutton's. I, I saw both of them today and it looked like Sutton's was far, far deeper than your yard. I, I don't know why I got that perception, but I did. Also, there's an extreme elevation, uh, between your, your long driveway, I'm gonna call it, and your short parking bed. There's an extreme elevation there that I'm not sure how you're gonna navigate that without tearing up the entire front yard uh, to put in this small radius. And, and, you know, Mrs. Full, Fullwaller's idea about the pad in the back, you know, if you, if you put a, a ten-foot pad in the back, I, I, I think that would accomplish exactly what you're intending at this point um, and, and not have to do all of that work. I mean, but, but again, uh, I, I'm not sold on, on, on circular driveways uh, in such short areas. Uh, there was a couple that I was on the board that we approved, and at this point, I wish we never did because they weren't intended, uh, as they were presented. But again, it's up to the board at this point, and I'm all set. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, for the applicant, is there anything you'd like to add before we close the hearing?
No, I'm all set at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, if you mute yourself, but stay on because we are gonna make a decision shortly, okay? Thank you. Okay, uh, board members, at this time, if you would, uh, someone would entertain a motion?
I'm trying to decide how to word it because I think, um, I'd be inclined to make a motion to approve, but I, I would like to see that be required to be closer to the house, up, up near the front entrance of the home. So, um, so how to make that specific without drawings that give us any dimensional aspect to them is, is my question. I don't know. Chip has any thoughts on this, on how to word it, but I would be open to suggestions.
I, I, yeah, it's, it's, it's tricky, obviously, because, you know, we only have a pretty rough sketch here. But I think, I, I think there's a couple options. One, you, you might be able to say a, a, approve subject to the condition that the arc of the, whatever we're calling this, be located as close to the front of the house as is practicable, but no further than, I don't know, pick a number. And if, if their contractor comes back and says that can't be done, then they're gonna have to come back here. I mean, I don't know how else to grant them relief that, 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 um, tonight, uh, without sort of putting parameters around it, that if it can't be done, that they have to come back. Because it's just, we just don't have the, the dimensions here to know for sure what they need. That's, that's really kind of the only thing I can think of. Unless somebody is able to, you know, one of you engineering types thinks you can sort of, uh, make some calculations as to what might be possible. I don't know what sort of arc this thing, these sort of things typically would require. But.
Well, I guess I would, I would say I would move to approve it subject to the. Well, I guess I would, I would say I would move to approve it subject to the, uh, west line of the connecting portion of the driveway being no more than seven feet east of the front of the home.
Oh, yeah.
And then if they come back with something else, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that's a reasonable approach. I mean, again, it, it may, their contractor may, may say that's just not possible, but I don't, but then they'll just have to come back. I, you know, I, I think that's a fair way to approach it. Um, how, do, do we know, what, what is the distance? Cause I don't see it on the sketch, from the front of the house to the sidewalk.
Thirty-nine point nine six on the survey from the house to this.
Right, yep.
We don't know how long that concrete pad is.
Correct.
Yeah, looking at.
Well, it scales about thirty-four and a half feet from the, um, front eve line to the west line of the sidewalk on the Erie County Internet mapping site. It's, so it's, you know, subject to some scaling error on a digital map, but it's about thirty-four and a half feet to the sidewalk from the front of the house. Maybe thirty-five after, I can't see the front, I can see the roof line, so I don't know how deep the eve is.
That'd be about right, that'd be about right.
Yeah.
So if, uh, if any, if I can get a second to that motion, uh, that Mr. Tine just made.
Can I?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Celeste on the question. Ms. Fullwiler?
Um, I think that when we were looking at the Sutton property, we also had a condition for landscaping there. I remember there was some discussion about it.
Uh, well, there was, but I don't think we did. I think we said that we really didn't have that authority to, to, to make them put what type of landscaping or whatever, um, but I remember that was also because of, of the proximity to the intersection, which was a big issue there.
Yeah.
Not mistaken. Uh, but like I said, if this, if this hadn't had the two curb cuts, I would probably be against it, but the fact that they're existing, um, so is there anything else on the question?
Yes, can Mr. Tine repeat his condition?
That the, um, west line of the connecting portion of the 10-foot wide driveway be no more than seven feet east of the front of the home.
And Bill, maybe you want to say the westernmost point of that?
The westernmost pointed it to the front entry of the home. I agree, cause it's arcing, so it's fair.
Subject to the westernmost point of the front of the home, to the connecting portion of the driveway.
The, the westernmost point of the connecting portion of the driveway will be no more than seven feet from the front of the house.
No further, further away from, right?
No further, no further than, yeah.
We don't care if it's closer, maybe.
Right.
Correct, correct.
Will be no more than seven feet away from the front of the house.
You wanna read it back, Debbie?
Okay, sub, it's subject, it's approved subject to the westernmost point of the front, of the connecting portion of the driveway be no more than seven feet away from the front of the house.
Yeah, I don't, I think there's an extra front in there, isn't there, Bill?
Yeah, it's, I'll go slow. It, it, subject to the westernmost edge of the connecting driveway, be no further from the front of the house.
Than seven feet.
Than seven feet. It would just easterly of the house, if you want to add that, I don't care.
And that was seconded by Mr. Celeste.
That's correct.
Now that we've confused Mr. and Mrs. Perry.
I'm not gonna lie, I think I rewrote it sixteen times and it probably still doesn't make sense, so.
Just make it look like a U.
Like a U, right? Right, left and connected two points, got it.
There you go.
And, and just, to be clear, if you, if you, if your contractor tells you that, that that just can't be done for whatever reason, then you're just gonna have to come back.
Okay, is there, I, I do have a question. Is there a minimum, so I'm going from like sidewalk to like the arc of the driveway, right? Like the middle arc, right? Is there a, is there a, a code or like, is there like something that states like, that would have to be like a certain depth from that point, like sidewalk to center of arc?
Not, 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 not by code, but you are limited to, a driveway can only be eighteen feet wide maximum, so.
Yeah.
And, and plus, so the other thing we have to do here, you've got, I actually think, now that you mentioned that, I think board is probably going to have to specify the width of that.
Oh, no, forget I said anything, no.
No, no.
And one, one actually said that, I said.
Yeah, no.
By connecting portion of the driveway.
Because otherwise, because again, the variance here is for the 20% of occupying of the front, paving over the front yard. We don't know what percentage it is if we don't dictate what the, what the width of that is.
Yeah, so Tim had said that we are well below the eighteen feet at ten feet on a width, so I mean, I don't really, I mean, I don't really see us going much wider than that, much wider than the ten feet, so I know we're beyond, definitely, definitely below the, the width, yeah, the eighteen foot width.
Yeah, but if, but I was, so if the board though puts that ten feet, eleven feet, nine feet, whatever they think's appropriate, that will put a frame around it and we'll know how much of a variance you're being granted.
Okay, that makes sense.
They, they submitted ten feet, so I, I would amend my motion so that it reads that that connecting portion of the road is ten feet wide, of the driveway is ten feet wide.
And Mr. Celeste, would you, uh, bend your second on it?
Yes, I'll amend my second.
Anything on the question? Clerk, please call the roll.
Hey, Mr. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Freeze?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Fullwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Okay, pass is five zero. Uh, the applicant, you're all set, get ahold of Tim and find out how he can continue, okay?
Thank you so much, everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you, thanks for attending.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It seems as though Tim's not gonna make it to this meeting. I, I don't think it's fair that we have Miss St. George, uh, wait any longer for our, uh, our decision and I would like to make a motion that, uh, that, uh, at this point, at this time, we postpone our decision on that, on that request until further detail is, is submitted and, and I know you'll be able to get it done, I'm, I'm in the business, so, uh, I wouldn't worry too much, just secure your contractors now and, and, and I'm sure, you know, we'll be able to get this through for you.
And I appreciate that. My only concern again is that I don't wanna sign a contract till I know that we can build, I, I know, and I, and I appreciate that, your position. Is there any way we could say, you know, a maximum of a certain roof peak pending plans that I would make sure that Tim saw that matched what was agreed on?
If, if I were to make that motion, I'm gonna tell you twenty feet. I don't think that's enough, I don't think that's enough headroom.
Right, I think.
And then you're gonna come back anyway.
Twenty-two.
I mean, I, I, you know, I can make that motion that we, we grant you the, the variance as written, which is twenty feet, a difference of six feet to the peak and let it go with that, if the other board members of course agree, but then I personally don't think that's enough room.
I agree with you, I think that we could do it with twenty-two feet at the peak, but.
I mean, I, I made the motion to postpone it, if some, if we don't get a second, let's let it play through and see what happens at this point.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, to adjourn the, the, um, hearing, cause we actually, the hearing was still open, so we'll adjourn the hearing, um, and we won't put a date on it because we don't know when this stuff will get put together and if they can get it in in time and et cetera, et cetera, so, um, motion by Mr. Freeze, second by Mr. Tine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, um, so we'll now move on to 33 Brookside, the hearing, uh, is 33 Brookside the, is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, I am. It's, uh, Vicky Hayes, I'm 33 Brookside Drive in the Village, 14221. This is my husband.
Michael.
Michael.
I know a couple of you, Deb, Joe, worked with you some time ago. I'm gonna stand in the background. And, uh, Vicky's very competent and can handle this, so, uh, go ahead.
Could you hold on one second, could, Ms. Hayes, could you, could you hold on one second, I'm trying to get, I, I see that the applicant from the last hearing had a question, so I'd just like to ask her if she'd like to say something.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Was there something from, uh, Evans, fifty-one Evans?
I don't see her on.
Okay, she was just about to ask a question maybe, okay. All right, so, um, Ms. Hayes, before you start, let me, um, address what was put into the file. We had a ZBA application dated March 26, 2020, a permit denial letter from the code enforcement officer, legal notice published in the Amherst B on July 1st, 2020, a list of letters, of letters to the notified neighbors, a letter to the applicant announcing the hearing and the agenda. Uh, what we're gonna do is let you present your case and then after you're done, we will have the, uh, audience, if they'd like to speak in favor or against, and after that, we'll have the, the, uh, board members, see if they have any questions for your, for the applicant. Uh, if you would please address the five criteria, do you have those with you, Ms. Hayes?
Yes, I do, yes, I do.
And, um, uh, please state your name and address and, and proceed, thank you.
Okay, my name is Vicky Hayes, my husband is J. Michael Hayes, our address is 33 Brookside Drive, 14221 in the Village. Um, uh, thank you for hearing our request tonight. Uh, we have a, um, contract, we, we set up with Saddle Fence, we would like to put in, uh, fencing and again, it's only near our foundation. Um, I submitted, um, the survey and also his, um, uh, drawing here with his measurements on it. Um, basically, we want to put in a four-foot, uh, chain link black fence, which is not really noticeable at all from the street. I have deer fencing there right now. Um, it's on either side of our porch, um, stoop and it's only seven point five feet from the foundation out to, um, twelve feet on one side, nine point five, um, and seven on the other, and then it goes back a little bit on the east side of our house, uh, in between my house and my neighbors, uh, for about ten feet and there's a little gate for access. Um, the reason why, um, I go through the, I, I talk to my, the reason why I'll talk, I'll address the questions first, um, the first question, uh, was whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting area variance. Um, no, there's really no undesirable change to, um, our home. I talked to, uh, the one neighbor on the other side, my, um, east side neighbor is Jim Matei, he's been here the whole time we've been here, we've been in our house since 1988. Um, he's, he had no issue with it whatsoever. The other side on the west is a rental and our garage is between our house and that house, you can't even see the fence from there if we did it. Um, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area use variance, no, not really. Um, three, whether the request area use variance is substantial. Um, it's not really that big, it's close to the foundation, um, planting's in front of the house, it's seven point five feet away on either side and the reason why I'm doing it is because over the years, we've been here since 1988, I've done extensive gardens on my property, um, we have an incredibly horrible deer problem, as most of us in the village know already. Um, I have had a lot of destruction to my plantings, especially in the front of my house, I'm on the creek, so I expect wildlife. We never had an issue with deer when we moved in here, we, it, it started about ten years ago. Um, it, it just, they destroyed everything, I mean, they made a mess out of things, I've spent a lot of money, I've spent money on replacements for plantings, I've done deer resistant plantings, I've done repellents, I was on the deer management committee in Amherst for five years, um, I was on it the first year they started and I learned a lot about deer management from the DEC, I'm a master gardener, I have a degree in horticulture, so I know a lot about deer and, you know, they're, they're to a point where unless I can protect my really good plantings in front and on the side, I won't have anything left and it really would look horrible. I don't mind using the deer netting, um, but it, you have to replace it every single year, you gotta take it down in the fall and it, it costs a lot of money to do that and if you, if I had a permanent type fence, you don't really have to go a lot more than four feet near your foundation because they have poor depth perception, so they won't jump into a building. Um, and I've found that this, just the netting with the netting four feet, they don't jump there, they don't even try and they don't try to knock it down, um, but it just doesn't look very good. Um, I find, I, I know you see on the code that, you know, you say three feet, you want a decorative fence, putting something really decorative that close to the house, it really doesn't look very good and it would have to be four feet. Um, I can see right through the black fencing, I have some actually in my backyard across where my deck is and that's six feet because it's allowed in back. Um, since I've had that, I've had no issue with the deer, they're not even interested, they walk right on by. Um, they're creatures of habit, so they teach their young where it's good to eat, um, and if they find your place is good and they can get to it, they will. Um, every day, most of the time in the last several years, I've had seven to nine deer, three times a day, come through my yard, eat, 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 and, you know, again, I've kinda given up on the, on the very bad plantings, I don't really, I've had to remove a lot because they were destroyed also. Um, the deer carry ticks, lyme disease, um, they leave excrement all over my lawn and it's just like I have, you know, I have no other recourse, um, to protect things. So basically, um, you know, it said whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, no, it really wasn't, I didn't have anything to do with the deer population increasing. Uh, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the appeal, but should not necessarily preclude any granting of use area variance. Um, I, I know there are other people in the village, they have the same issues, um, I'm sure you've heard complaints about this before. Um, I would appreciate the consideration to be able to do this. I do have a walk in front of my house, um, off my front, little front porch stoop, so the fencing is behind the walk and again, it doesn't really interfere with anything with my neighbors or even with the view from the street. My house is set way back, uh, from the street and you don't really even see the fence at all. Um, and aesthetically, I don't think it would look that bad, to be honest with you. I think a, a white picket would look, stand right out and look, wouldn't look right. So, um, and Michael, do you have anything to add? My husband, I have to ask him.
The only thing I would say is that you've all seen in the village, a lot of people like hostas and you've seen the celery stalks that remain when the deer feed and we have some very nice hostas in front of the house, we planted before the deer issue came, came about. We had several years where we had celery and since we put up this temporary netting, uh, we're back to having pretty hostas with the flowers. Uh, what Vicky is suggesting, uh, will look a lot better than these temporary things with the farmer's poles in there, uh, you're not gonna see it at all from the street and I don't think it would be at all detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, cause I don't think the deer are going away. Thanks.
So I guess that's it, so far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, uh, anything else you'd like to add before we open it up?
Um, not, not just yet, no.
Okay, um, at this point, I'm gonna ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this variance. Seeing none, we will ask, uh, if the members want to ask the, the applicant any questions. Mr. Celeste, you wanna start?
Yeah, I, I, um, I wanted to ask, you mentioned that you had to, uh, use a number of different deterrence, uh, being sprays or whatnot. Have you tried, um, motion detect, motion detection sprinklers?
No.
No, but I, the way the deer are, they would not, they get used to what you do. No, we never tried those. We, I found that in talk, in, I used to teach classes on this. I, they, people found that with motion, they get used to it. And they just, they look at it, they stand and they think, you know, they don't, they just, they disregard it eventually.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, that's, that's all the question I had.
Okay, Mr. Freeze, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Fullweller?
I have no questions.
Tine?
How high are your windows off the ground at the front of the house? I mean, where does four feet come and?
About four, about four, they're about four feet off the ground.
So the top of the fence would come to the window sill?
Yeah, but it's, it's seven and a half feet away from the window, so it, you, it doesn't interfere with anything from the window.
No, I'm more concerned about...
But that's a good question, no, that's a good question, yeah.
Because the issue that we've been talking about is largely the aesthetic impact. I understand the, the objective, but the, the question for the neighborhood is the aesthetic impact. And everybody's got the same deer problem. So if everybody starts saying, yeah, we'd like to wrap our houses in four-feet-of-chain-link fence, then I'm not sure I'd agree with anyone that that's an attractive look for the village. So Mike, it would be nice if there were some renderings or something that showed us what this would actually look like. What colors, I mean, there's different types of, of chain-link fencing in different colors to keep it from, you know, glistening in the sun, the metal look. If it's, if it's painted black, is it, what, what's your intention? Is it going to be forest green, what?
No, 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 it's a black chain-link, it's in my request. It's a black chain-link fence. We already have one in the back, and you don't even really notice it. It doesn't reflect, it's, it's very invisible. In fact, the netting that is up in front of my house right now, in front of my deer gardens, it looks awful. I mean, I walk down any of the streets in the village and people have deer netting, it just doesn't look right. I know a woman that puts white sheets over her garden at night because she has to protect her stuff. It, it's just, it's gotten to the point where you can't, you know, there's no, there's no way to deal with it. And the actual landscape without the fence, when they eat it, it looks horrible. I mean, for me to tear all that landscaping out and try to find another group of plantings to put in there that they may eat in the future, which I had done in the past, I had changed a bunch of plantings, I put some new ones in there. Four years later, they ate those too. So I'm, I'm at a point between a rock and a hard place, to be honest with you. And my landscaping is really beautiful, I have to say that. I've done, Mike and I have done extensive gardens around our house. And it's just like, I, I can't take looking at the mess they make. They were actually eating out of my window boxes. I was in bed one night, our bedroom's on the first floor, and I heard this crunching. There were two deer eating out of, I mean, and then they poop in the, in front of it. I mean, and they...
Right.
Eat carry ticks. And I worry about the Lyme disease, I mean, it's just, I, I, the fence is not ugly, it just isn't. I have it in back already, and I, I don't find it offensive at all, especially with the plants behind it. It's very, it, you see the plants, you don't really see the fence. I guess that's all the answer I have for that.
Mr. Tine, any other questions?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Hayes, before we close the hearing?
No, but I, is there anything I should want to add? Oh, my husband wants to add one more thing, this is my...
Mr. Tine, the, the window sills are four feet from the ground.
Okay.
The poles that support the fence are not up at the full top level. You've got a little bit of the fence goes above the poles that support it as they run across. So the dark black pole supporting the fence would be slightly under that four-foot level. And at least in our location, that side faces north, which is in the shadows. So when you look from the street, if you can see that part of the house, you're going to see shadows and the black chain link is going to be essentially invisible.
Oh, he's definitely a lawyer, that was good.
He just went out to measure.
You guys want facts, those are facts.
You know.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Hayes?
No, that's all, thank you.
All right, we're going to close the public hearing, and you're welcome to stick around, we will have a decision in a few minutes.
Okay.
Just mute yourself, and then if we have any questions, we'll call you back in, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the, on the variance.
I'll make a motion, then we approve the variance as submitted.
Second on that motion?
Well, since he says on the north side in the shade, I'll second it.
I'm going to, I'm going to tell you something also, I don't know if you'd go by there today. I couldn't even see the house because of all the landscaping by the road, so I'm not even sure we're going to see this thing if and if it isn't.
Well, it could also have been a three-foot, and then it would have been in code, so I guess...
And I may, and I may have put their heads over it, and they would have...
Okay, we have, we have a motion by Mr. Freeze, a second by Mr. Tine. On the question, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Freeze?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Fullweller?
Yes.
Mr. Celeste?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five to zero. The applicant, go ahead and contact him, and you can go ahead with your, with your project, okay? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for hearing us tonight, we appreciate it very much. Happy deer hunting.
See you, guys, thanks.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Tine?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Fullweller, all in favor?
Aye.
So carried, we'll see you in August, hopefully.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Take care.
Excuse me, what's the date, what's the date going to be for August meeting?
There is an August meeting scheduled, it's already scheduled. It was scheduled for the nineteenth.
Okay.
That's the schedule, anyway, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks for everybody.
Bye now.
Bye.
Bye now.